I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, December 10th, regular board meeting for the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. We will begin our meeting with the flag salute. Dr. Cash, will you do the honors, please?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
Buenas tardes a todo el público. Tenemos interpretes en español si alguno de ustedes necesita o desea sus servicios. Estamos acá atrás. Gracias.
We also have headsets for the hearing impaired if those are needed. We will begin our meeting with introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Cash?
Well, very fortunate tonight we have two students from La Cuesta that are going to start with the student presentation, representatives from La Cuesta High School, Alexis and Juan.
Good evening. So, starting off with San Marcos High School, the annual penny drive is currently underway at San Marcos at McKinley, Monroe, Roosevelt, and La Colina. Last year, the penny drive donated over 10,000. This past October, Royal Blue Review was held. All students had the opportunity to perform in our open all-school talent showcase. Our competition show is happening this Friday. Annual Kids Helping Kids Royals Got Talent will be held at the San Marcos Auditorium Friday night at 7:00. The winner will be opening act for the Annual Kids Helping Kids Benefit Concert, January 12th, at the Granada Theater. This past November, Performing Arts Department put on an amazing play, Approaching Zazabar. It was funny and thought-provoking. Our next play will be held Thursday, Sunday, oh, through, Thursday through Sunday. Our EL and special needs students will be performing Oliver Goldsmith's She Stoops to Conquer, Thursday through Saturday at 7:00 PM. Adult tickets are five. Play will be held in Room I-10. Please come support them as it is an amazing experience. January 16th through the 18th, the Performing Arts Department will put on its one acts. One acts are a series of short plays performed in the round onstage in the auditorium. It is a fun night of comedy, drama, and everything in between. They are free. San Marcos is very proud that Derek Tilton and Sidney Black were named finalists in the Santa Barbara International Film Festivals. Derek will be writing a screenplay. Sidney will have 10 days to make a 10-minute film this coming January. San Marcos has had a strong history, a long history of success in the 10-10-10 competition. Our marching band and Coligard won the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association Division 1, champions after a dominating performance at Aliso-Neguero High School. Our fall sports are a very successful season. Season six of our fall sport qualified for CIFSS playoffs. Girls volleyball were the city champs. Boys cross-country qualified for the state finals. Our girls water polo team is ranked fifth in Division 1, the highest ranking they've ever had. Our boys basketball team is 4-0 to start the season, including a win over perennial powerhouse Crenshaw. Moving on with Santa Barbara High School, upcoming events. Number one, winter formal, ASB juniors are currently planning our second and last all-classes dance of the year. Number two, snow day. ASB currently has a committee planning our annual snow day, which includes teaching about traditional holiday festivities, as well as activities such as pictures with Santa, playing, uh, what is it? Playing games and having snow for students to play with on the senior lawn. Fundraisers. Holiday grams, the senior class will be selling winter stuffed animals and other small gifts to raise money for senior activities. Recent activities, Adopt a Family, SBHS staff, teachers, and students adopted 16 local families through COMS Adopt a Family program. Students and staff donated presents, wrapped the gifts, and delivered presents to COMS for each family that might not otherwise receive gifts. Blood Drive, over 60 students and staff members donated pints of blood at the Blood Drive in November. November, students and staff participated in the annual No Shave November, raising over 500 for men's health research. Our jazz band and band combos played this Sunday at Soho for their annual holiday concert fundraiser. Our madrigals and acapella singers have their annual winter concerts this weekend at Garden Street Academy. Our VADA 10th graders were featured in the first Thursday at the new downtown McConnell's. Next is La Cuesta High School. The annual teens for jeans clothing drive yielded over 100 pairs of jeans for Santa Barbers, for Santa Barbarians in need. Read for Clause will be held on further notice. Mr. Mowers' conceptual physics class recently took a trip to Ortega Park to launch the rockets they built. Forty-four students participated in the project. Alta Vista Alternative High School. Students from the four Quetzal programs will be taking a trip to Museum of Art as a follow-up to their study of Mexican folk art. The Alta Vista Gardening Club has been growing squash, kale, and other hardy fall/winter vegetables. Students are learning skills such as how to build their own beds, planting, and composing. Middle College students recently volunteered at fundraising dinner for Beacon of Hope for Afghan children. The dinner was hosted by Middle College alumnus Michael Levitt. Next is Dos Pueblos Cross-Country. Addie Zrenner finished second at state meet and moved on as individual to night cross-nationals. The boys team finished second in Southern Section and third in state. Ealing Strain Festival at Ealing's Park on November 14th, or December 14th, will be a fundraiser for all local high schools' cross-country programs. Girls water polo, both soccer teams and both basketball teams have started their seasons. Girls water polo, Penny Drive is underway and will last until December 18th. All proceed will go to the unity shop. Student Senate approved the purchase of a new sound system for student events. The next student senate will be tomorrow, Wednesday, December 10th. Fundraiser, 5K on December 7th, raised money for sport programs and the leadership class. Can Food Drive ended two weeks ago. New riding center opened on November 14th. Holiday packages will be running December 16th through the 20th. Winter recess starts December 21st until February 5th. Thank you.
I don't know who's been busier, Dr. Cash. I don't know if the students have been busier than we have, or if they have. They're pretty busy.
They are very busy. It's a busy time of year. Yesterday was day one of our hour of code at Adams Elementary, Lacumbra Junior High School, where students are learning the basics of computer programming. I know it's also occurring at Santa Barbara High School as well, and this program continues through December 15th. As you just witnessed in our courtyard, this is the holiday season, and in the State Street Parade, our incredibly talented students performed throughout the community. We have a handout at the back of the room that lists many of the December events, and many of those events are free, and we would encourage everyone to attend and applaud and support our student performers. The Milpus Holiday Parade is this Saturday, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out to the entire community that our board president, Monique Limone, is the grand marshal of the Milpus Parade. Congratulations, Monique.
Thank you.
While Monique will be riding in a really wonderful convertible, the rest of the board and the superintendent will be riding on bicycles. We'll wear warm clothing to stay warm, and we'll be there to support our community and also President Limone. It should be great fun. I'd also finally like to call your attention to another handout at the back of the room, and that's our academy showcase, which will be occurring from 5:00 to 7:00 on December 18th at the Earl Warren Showgrounds. And the community is invited to attend. It's a first-time event. Our six academies in the international backglow will be represented, and the event is free, and the flyers are at the back of the room. And this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, comments or correspondence that we'd like to share? Mr. Herron?
I think you know me, don't you?
Yeah.
That music outside was fantastic, but I did go to the Franklin School last week, and ICANN put on the musical for the Third Annual Holiday Concert. And to see these kids up there with violins and complete orchestras and choral groups, I can't thank the group ICANN enough. It's a nonprofit that supports a lot of our musical and art in our schools. Mrs. Parker and I also attended the Parent Project graduation at Dos Pueblos High School. It's a Parent Project, it's a 10-week class, and it's designed to give improved parent-child communication, change destructive adolescent behavior, improve school performance, actively supervise their child, and how to become involved in the schools. And to see these parents and their students graduating from this class and taking an active role in our education of our students was a sight to behold. It was a very heartwarming experience to be there and watch them graduate.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Dr. Bass?
I just wanted to note that four school board members and the superintendent attended the California School Board Association meeting, which is an annual meeting that school board members attend, that we try to attend workshops on different topics so we keep up with what's happening across the state of California. Major topics that we got a lot of information on were the local control funding formula, which is really, we're really going to be determining how our budget looks like, and we're going to have much more control over a big chunk of our budget as we move forward. So that's a really important piece. And the other important area of note is Common Core state standards, which there were a lot of workshops, I think a number of us attended, so just wanted to note that. And I just wanted to say that it was great and have a lot of information to share amongst each other.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. All right, and this moves us to public comment. I believe we do have public comment.
Announcement?
There is, thank you. There is no reportable announcement of closed section action items.
Yes, we do have public comment, and so I don't know if you want to go ahead and close public comment at this point, if anybody has a...
Any additional public comment? This is general public comment, not on a specific agenda item. If there's additional, all right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment.
All right, we do have a number of speakers. For speakers, I just want to let you know you have three minutes. I will call your name and the name of the two people immediately after you, so that you have a heads-up that you're coming up. And I'll try to give you a 30-second warning when your three minutes is close to up. So the first speaker we have is Mary Jo McGrath, followed by Nick Katzenstein, and pardon me if I mispronounce names, you can correct me at the podium, followed by Nancy Goodfriend.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As said, my name is Mary Jo McGrath, and I represent the 13 homeowners in the Vista Del Campo Association. And our homes are immediately adjacent to Lacumbra Middle School, and we've been there for 38 years, and we love the school, and we love the sound of the children and being close to them as they get their education, and we really consider ourselves good neighbors. We've had a difficult time in the last year because at some point it was decided to present or provide drumming as an elective at the school. And the difficulty is that it's done outdoors. And our homes are uphill from the school property, so the sound rises, and it's like the drumming is going on in our living rooms. And it's an elective class, so it's often, it's offered throughout the day several times. It's different than what we used to have. You know, at the holiday season, people would, the marching band would practice on the field, and it was wonderful. I mean, we listened to all the tunes, and it was, we got a preview before the parade. And it was really a wonderful thing. This is distinctly different. This is incessant drumming most of the day, near nonstop. It makes it impossible to take a nap. It makes it impossible to concentrate. It is very, very difficult. So our request as your good neighbors is that you not have that elective at the school until the school can house the program indoors. And if it's housed indoors, then the sound won't travel up the hill, and we'll all go back to how it was and have peace in the neighborhood. So we don't mean to be cranky. We really do love the kids and adore the music program and the whole thing. We just need to be in our homes without drumming. And I think if anyone has a child, if you can imagine giving that child a drum, and the child pounds on that drum all day in the living room, you would go nuts. So that's a little bit like, a lot actually, like how it is now. So we would like you to please consider our request that you finish off the season, this holiday season...
30 seconds.
Have the kids practice, do whatever they need to do, but please don't offer that program in the next semester or any other time in the future until your facility can accommodate the children inside, and it cannot disturb either the other students or your immediate neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Katzenstein, followed by Nancy Goodfriend, followed by Tom...
Jarnigan.
Thank you, Jarnigan.
Good evening, board members. My name is Nick Katzenstein. I'm a resident on Vista Del Campo also, and I'd like to echo Mary Jo's concerns and complaints here, if you will. I've lived up there for a little more than 25 years, and I knew going into the purchase of that home that I was going to be next to a school. But what I didn't realize was that they've gone way beyond the extracurricular activities by having this drumming that's occurring now. And it's gotten to the point where I actually plan my day to be absent from my home when they are drumming. Or if I have to be at home, I actually wear my noise-canceling headphones in the house. And that's kind of inconvenient. Any help you can be, I sure appreciate it, as I know the rest of the neighbors would too. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Goodfriend, followed by Tom Jarnigan, followed by Julia Laraway.
We don't know that Nancy made it yet.
Yes. Good evening. Thanks for hearing us. My name is Nancy Goodfriend. I'm also a member of the Vista Del Campo Association. My husband and I moved in to the neighborhood, which we love, it's a secluded area, in 2005, and never experienced any problems with the school. And starting last year, I think it was 2012, this infamous drumming started, and as has been mentioned, it is really relentless all day long. They used to do it last year, early in the morning, before 8:00. This year, it started about 10:00, and it goes till 3:00. And it's become a real public nuisance to us as neighbors. So as Mary Jo and Nick have mentioned, we've really tried to be good neighbors. We've never had a problem with the school before 2012. And I was informed by the principal that the reason, I guess last year the students were outside, was because more had signed up than they had expected. And I can appreciate that, I'm interested in music myself. But this year, we were told the auditorium is under construction. So each year, there's been a different excuse, and I'm sure it's a real excuse, but the end result is that we are really being mentally and physically affected by this. And I have windows all across my front living room and kitchen, and they literally vibrate much of the day. And so I also echo the request that this class either not be offered or that it is accommodated in a proper place where it is not resounding through the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Jarnigan, followed by Julia Laraway, followed by Giselle Pantoja. Is Mr. Jarnigan here?
He'll pass.
He'll pass, okay. Then Julia Laraway, followed by Giselle Pantoja, followed by Rigoberto Sanchez.
Hello. I am a Lacumbra mom. All three of my children, from my senior to my sophomore to now my 7th grader, have been at Lacumbra. So we started in 2009. And what I know is that there's been a drum line for all those years, and I'm guessing that it's been inside, but there's been a drum line for all those years. This year, I know that we do have the construction going on, and that would make sense that they would be outside, but it is in fact temporary. And my thing with my little 7th grader, he is a saxophone player, and so I'm sure he's been one making all those toots and tweets and probably squawks. And, but the thing is, is that it's an integral part of a successful education, music is. And what the music is doing is it's providing a space for children to thrive and learn outside the box of academics, and so it's really incredibly important. I would just ask, since it is temporary, that you listen for the beauty in it. And I know it might be hard, but listen for the beauty in it. And it'll be over on the 14th, right?
Thank you. Giselle Pantoja, followed by Rigoberto Sanchez, followed by Joanne Keynes.
Hello. My name is Giselle, and I've been in elementary for last year, and I had a really hard time. And then when I came to junior high, I'm like, this is a new year, and I'm trying to fresh, and I just wanted to get out of my box, so I did drum. And I think drumming is just really fun. It gets, like, it's just outside the box, and you can just express yourself and let everything out. And asking these people, like, to not take away our music because it just means a lot to me, and like, if you guys just take it away, it's just kind of like, I have nothing else to do, to two and three, and I have no idea what I'm going to be doing. I'm just probably going to be home, watching TV, and like, that's not really fun. So I just really do ask you guys don't take it away. Also, like, if you guys do cut it off, like, probably going to be doing bad things, talking to my mom pretty bad. So I just think you guys shouldn't take it off. So that's my request, and I hope you guys take it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pantoja. Rigoberto Sanchez, followed by Joanne Keynes.
Hi, my name is Gustavo, and, well, I was like, going to say the same thing as she because, because if you guys cut that off, then what would we all do if, like, we had nothing to do for, like, last period for us? And so I would like for them, like, for not cut it off, and for us to learn new experience, for us to learn more, and to like, one of us to live our dreams or to do something that we always wanted to do. And so that's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Sanchez?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to correct the record to make sure they get the name correct on this. Principal Joanne Keynes, and if you could just give me the exact name. Gustavo Sanchez?
Gustavo, say your last name.
Ramirez.
Ramirez, Gustavo Ramirez. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and district. Pleasure to be here. Joanne Keynes, principal of Lacumbra Junior High. I come bearing amazing news about the instrumental music program at Lacumbra Junior High. When I took over in 2005, there were eight students in the band. Today, there are over 100 students in the band. Exciting. We've run out of uniforms. Our band room is too small. It will not fit 100 students with their instruments, which has been a blessing and a curse all at the same time. We also share the campus with Santa Barbara Community Academy, that uses the multipurpose room several days a week for their music program. So we have been able in the past to use the music, the multipurpose room, a day or two, the auditorium, a day or two, and made it work. We've also, were able to increase the number of instrumental music periods this year, which for our students accommodates students of all abilities and disabilities, accommodates beginning players, intermediate, and advanced players. So we have had a challenge this year, and the drums, period by period, anywhere from 8 to 10, have been outside. We in no way intended to cause anybody any discomfort. Again, with our theater down, which is a great thing, until August, we really, literally have no space. What we have said to everybody is after the parade season, which ends this Saturday, as we are directly behind Ms. Limone in the Milpus Parade, we will be able to restrict some of the drumming outside that goes on using the multipurpose room. We do use, in the morning, we use drum heads to muffle the sound. It's, it's an amazing program that we are hoping is going to feed into our high schools and increase San Marcos and Santa Barbara's instrumental music program as well. As a matter of fact, we are so committed to music and its effect on students throughout the rest of the school day, that we have offered the Mike Nun Music Award for the last several years for 8th graders who have committed to continuing music into high school. That's how much we value the music program. So again, the great news is, we've got 100 students in instrumental music. We're trying to mitigate our challenges, doing the best we can. We've been good neighbors to all sides and would like to continue to do so. Again, we have our challenges, we're doing our best and trying to make lots of great music. If you saw us in the State Street Parade, you know what a force we are, and we'll see you all at the Milpus Parade. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like a question for Ms. Keynes.
Mr. Herron?
Just to be clear, everybody loves music. I mean, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody would not want music at our schools. But what can you tell these people that after Saturday, what will it be like that's different than it has been the last month? Well, on Thursday and Friday, we have access to the multipurpose room. So we'll be able to have drumming inside the multipurpose room. So here's my choice, Mr. Herron. I've got instruments and I've got drums, and so I can put the, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I can put music outside, or I can put drums outside. They can't, there's not enough room in the band room. So what I can promise you is that after Saturday, there will be no drumming at all outside on Thursday and Friday. What about during the day on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday? Well, at this time, I don't have another location for instruments and drums to exist at the same time because both of them happen each period.
actually can't make a formal decision on this.
No, but we can ask for brief responses to statements or questions permitted, but no discussion or action. We may ask questions for clarification, and we may refer to staff for information requests to report back and direct to place matters on future agenda. So I just want the quest, a couple of questions with a very direct response with no discussion, but you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we conclude public comment, and we will go on to acceptance of donations.
I'll move to accept with gratitude.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes five zero. And now we go on to our annual organization meeting. So we have election of officers for president and vice president. So I will say thank you to the board for your support for serving as president this past year. It's been an eventful year. And I will let Dr. Cash run the election.
Well, before we get started, we have a couple of things we need to do. Number one, you can probably imagine based on the shape of the box what's inside here. But truly, you've been a marvelous president, not only through the way that you've acted as the president, but the modeling you've done as a board member. Truly, we're very fortunate to have you as an educational leader in our district, and you've done an excellent job as the board president. So here's your going-away gavel.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
And we couldn't let you get away without any flowers as well.
Wow.
So I'm just going to leave them in here.
That's okay.
So they don't spill. But this, the flowers really represents the joy that you brought as the president to all of us in our community and the district staff. And we want to really thank you for the great work that you've done on behalf of children.
Thank you.
So congratulations on a great year.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presidency.
Thank you.
Okay, well, on with the business of electing a president.
I would like to make one comment, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herron.
I'd just have to say during this year, I am constantly amazed at your ability to analyze and to speak in a way that is so meaningful. And I just want to say I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Thank you.
Well, at this time, I will open the nominations for president of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Kate Parker.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations? Then I will close the nominations. May we vote by acclamation, or would you like a roll call vote? Why don't we? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Parker. You are the president of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education.
And it's time for the annual December musical chairs. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor for nominations for vice president.
I would like to nominate Mr. Ed Herron.
Sir, second?
I'd like to second that.
Any other comments or questions on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye. Does he accept?
You will accept.
Yeah.
Everybody else? All right. That passes five zero, and we'll juggle again. Oh, and you may want to take your. At this time, we're going to move on to the organizational section for the appointments of representatives and alternates to various committees. First of all, we need an appointment of a representative and an alternate to elect members of the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization. And let's see. I'm looking at this to see who we have on this committee. We don't have anybody at this point?
No.
Oh, it's you, Dr. Paz?
Dr. Paz.
All right. So.
It's such a big responsibility.
I think that, in a way, we have so many things to run through here. I think I would like to ask, in order to save time if we can, if there are people that want to change committees, or if there's something that you need to come off of. Otherwise, if people are happy with status quo, you can just let me know at this point. Ms. Limone?
I'm okay with the committees as they stand.
I also am okay with what I serve on.
Dr. Paz, Mr. Herron?
The only question is the Santa Barbara Armory Committee. It hasn't met for two years, so I'm not sure it's even really a committee anymore. So I'm happy to disband it if people want to.
Yeah, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
And Dr. Cash, are there any new ones on the list that? I didn't see any that didn't already have somebody on there, but I just want to double check with you. Was there anything that was, that was missing?
The only potentials would be something similar to what the board currently does with Adelante Charter with both Santa Barbara Charter School and Peabody Charter School as a board liaison.
Okay. Did we want to address that at this time, or should we address that at a future meeting?
I think perhaps we should address it at a future meeting. I think it would be important to also get their take on it and make sure that that's something that they want.
Okay.
Other than that, none.
All right. So a couple of the, of the other items on this agenda item are the designation of date and time of the regularly scheduled board meeting. This is, again, essentially status quo for the 2014 calendar year. Any comments, questions, changes desired from that? If you look at Section D on this item? No? And then finally, there's the designation of secretary clerk and assistant secretary clerk. That is, I believe, you, Dr. Cash, is that correct?
It is, yes. It's myself and Ms. Jete.
Then I will ask for a motion from the floor to hold committee appointments as status quo, to hold the meetings as designated for 2014, and to designate Dr. Cash and Ms. Jete as secretary clerk and assistant secretary clerk.
Without having to repeat that, I make the motion.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to pull?
Madam President, before the board considers, there was a small revision to the part of the consent agenda, which is the personal action form, where one change was made. It's noted revised copies are available for the public, and the revised copy is before you as well.
All right. Ms. Limone?
I'd like to pull the human resources recommendation list, only to abstain.
I have two comments under discussion, but I will not pull the two articles.
Did you want to go ahead and?
There's two items on the agenda, just I want to point out, and I'm totally in favor of them, but I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware of it. Number two, F2, is student field trip out of country for the Mat Academy going to Mexico. Typically, that would be an unusual request, but under the circumstances and the way it's been outlined to me, I'm totally in favor of it, but just want the public to know that it's a conscious decision on my part. The other is on item 19, G19, there's an over-budget item at Santa Barbara Junior High, science classroom modernization, and it's bond funds, and it's $200,000 over budget. And so my question to Mr. Hetjunk was, do we have $200,000 without eliminating any other item on the list? And he's assured me that there are some that are less, some that are more, but he feels confident that we can have that $200,000 for that project. So I'm happy with that response.
All right. Can I have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda? We're going to go ahead and pull G4, the recommended human resources action, so we will deal with that separately.
So moved. I do have a question, well, I'll let you get a second.
Yes, there's a second on that?
Second.
I know we have members here from Santa Barbara High School and the Mat Academy, and I don't know if they would like some time to publicly clarify what the field trip, or if we're okay as is.
They were here to answer any board member questions.
Okay. All right.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. All right, let's deal with human resources recommendations. And Ms. Limone, you pulled that.
Only to abstain.
Only to abstain. And I wanted to take the opportunity to note the retirement in the spring of Bruce Chavez from Maintenance and Operations. He's been a fantastic employee for so many years and will be greatly missed, but not happening for a while, so we'll take advantage of him while we can. So human resources recommendations as revised.
Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
All right. So Limone is the abstention. And we will now move on to the action agenda. First up is the H1, approval of the second extension and modification of the superintendent's employment agreement. Board members, we have spent some time doing the annual evaluation for Dr. Cash. He did have a positive, positive evaluation, and thank you so much for a great year of service and hard work and everything that you have done for us. As part of that, we typically look at his contract annually as well, and we came to some agreements about it. And this should be available in the back, and it's available online. It's essentially the existing contract with three minor changes. One is that his contract would be extended out one year to June 30th, 2016. Another is it will continue the annual step increases that are tied to the certificated teaching staff step increases, the Class 1 Step 1 to Step 2 increase. And then the third change is that during any contract year, the superintendent may elect to surrender up to 10 days of his unused accrued vacation and be paid in lieu thereof at his per diem rate for each such day, which is something that he would be able to do at the end of his contract anyway. This just brings it so that he can do it on an annual basis. So any comments or questions about this? No? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the second extension and modification of superintendent's employment agreement?
I make the motion to extend, as you gestated.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously. Next up is item H2, the approval of contract with LPA Architects. And Dr. Cash?
Would like to ask David Hetjunk, he's going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. As indicated at the last meeting, we are bringing back to you a contract proposal with LPA Architects to conduct our facilities master plan. Exciting time for the district, exciting time for facilities. I'd like to thank Kelly Coltrip for all the hard work he put into heading up this project and, and developing all the documents that went out and working with Dr. Cash and myself on this agreement. Do have, if you have any questions of LPA, we do have Mr. John Mills with LPA in the audience, sitting next to Kelly. Mr. Herron did ask one question of me earlier, and that was of the dollar amount. Many times when we approve construction contracts, we give the contracted amount plus I put, as in the budget, plus 10% for change orders. We always have a 10%, try to have a 10% reserve. When we do architect contracts, we probably usually have a contract that is an amount based on this cost of construction, plus they are allowed reimbursables. In this contract, also, there is an allowance for reimbursables, typically not to exceed 10%, and, and the description of those reimbursables is in the contract. So this item should read approval on the amount listed plus 10% for reimbursables. And I'm sorry it didn't get presented that way at the beginning with the little plus 10% that we typically see on a lot of contracts when they come to the board. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them, otherwise I'll turn it over to Dr. Cash as, as he was the lead negotiator.
Dr. Paz?
I was just curious about task three that's listed in the, in the schedule about the existing facilities needs assessment. What, what, what was to occur during that, that period of time?
I think that we want LPA Architects to look at the facilities assessment that TeleQ did, and then based on that assessment, they'll know what projects have been completed, what projects are in progress, and what projects are scheduled to complete with our bond funds. And that will give them a starting point as to what is needed facility-wise. And a lot of that work has been done and does not be, need to be duplicated, but they will still be doing some site visits and looking at some things. And based on the direction that the master plan goes, especially once we get site input, there may be some more investigations as to projects that would typically be added to the list. For instance, we know that we have a lot of portables that are in bad shape. That's kind of a blanket statement. We want LPA Architects to, to look at that component as a major part of this master plan in moving forward with projects. In addition, we have many projects that were not funded by Measure Q and R because they're oversubscribed.
I know when, when we were reviewing the, the facilities needs assessment, and one of the things I think that a number of the board members talked about is the desire to come back to that needs assessment or sort of a periodic way. And so I'm curious to, to know if that's part of the facilities master plan in terms of one of the, the pieces that may not necessarily be seen in the, in the task.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No other comments or questions? Mr. Herron?
When I asked you the question at the last meeting, that my understanding that we were going to renegotiate the contract to some degree, your answer to it was, yes, it might go down to in the 200,000 range. Obviously, it hasn't, but I've reread the contract, and it looks like we have a lot of input on what they can do and when they can do it and monitoring it. And so I guess I just want to make sure my expectation is out there that I hope we do that. I mean, I hope, I hope we see if there's things we've already done that don't need to be redone, that we don't recreate the wheel.
Correct.
And so I'm going to go on good faith that the company understands that this needs to be looked at, and if we can reduce some of these expenditures in the different categories, that we'll, we'll do that to the best of our ability.
I think one of the most important things we'll be looking to do is to get as much input as possible from the community. And that, that will be part of also our regular reporting back to you. We've just established a district-wide leadership team that's going to kind of be the umbrella organization that will get the feedback from the site teams, and that district leadership team will, will report back to the board as to how that's going, and that will include the billing.
I do have one quick question, and maybe it ties in with what Dr. Cash just said. On their, on their proposed program schedule, they referred to monthly meetings with the Facilities Master Plan Committee. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Or is that something different?
No, that's the same group.
The district is the same group?
Yes.
Okay. And may I ask who, if you've set that team already, who is on that team?
It's the three of us, Dave, Ben Drady, Kelly Coltrip, and Bruce Chavez.
Steve Vizelini.
Steve Vizelini, yes.
Susan, okay.
Since Bruce is going to be retiring.
February 28th is his date, not the spring.
So I was trying to think of, I was thinking of it as March, but okay. I guess that's winter. All right, thank you very much. We need to have a motion at this point. Mr. Heron.
I'll move approval of the contract with LPA Architects with the addition of the additional not to exceed 10% or $28,425 added to the proposal.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion by Mr. Heron, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to Item H3, Positive Certification of the First Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2013-14. And Ms. Jete?
Thank you, Madam President.
I don't know if you've considered this, but I think there's a lot of people for the charter, and this is going to take 30 minutes and that's going to take 60. Can we switch?
Do you have?
Absolutely.
Does the board have any issues with that? Shall we go ahead and move forward?
No.
That's fine.
I've been tabled.
Ms. Jete, you have been tabled. Yes. Then let us move on to Item H4, The Approval of the Petition for Renewal with Conditions for Santa Barbara Charter School. Dr. Cash?
Well, first I want to start by thanking Mr. Handel for doing such a tremendous job in facilitating the conversations, the work with both directors at the charter school. And I'll hand it off to Mr. Handel to review his recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, President Parker, board members. I also want to echo, I want to echo Dr. Cash's words that it was a pleasure to work with both directors. Both Bev and Dave Weisman were really great to work with, understanding, and it was a relationship that it worked really well as we got closer and closer to the date. So I want to thank them on behalf of our staff for working so hard on this revision. With that stated, on November 22nd, 2013, Santa Barbara Charter resubmitted a revised charter renewal petition. The revised petition addressed each of the original concerns. Those concerns and where they're addressed in the revised renewal petition are listed below. So we had originally asked for a comprehensive three-year professional learning plan. They addressed that in the revised renewal petition in Appendix E, pages 96 through 99. We also asked for a comprehensive three-year Common Core State Standards Transition Plan. They addressed that thoroughly in Appendix D, pages 92 through 95 of the revised renewal petition. We additionally asked for a comprehensive description of the school-wide educational program that includes specific Common Core-based curriculum, materials, and what have you. They also addressed that in quite a lot of detail in Appendices G through K, pages 102 through 553. And right here, I'd really like to commend all of the teachers and again Bev and Dave for all their work in putting this together. I know it was a lot of work, but I appreciate it, and all the details really fell into peace for me, and I was able to better understand your educational program. We also asked for a comprehensive description of instructional programs for low achieving, high achieving, and English learner students. All that was addressed in Educational Program Section J, pages 19 through 22 of the revised renewal petition. We also asked for a comprehensive financial projection. That was submitted to Mrs. Meg Jete prior to November 1st, and I want to thank Mr. Weisman for working with Ms. Jete on that piece. And finally, we requested a comprehensive plan to attain racial and ethnic balance. This was also addressed in Appendix C, and I know we went through a couple of revisions with that plan. I want to thank, I want to thank both directors, especially Bev, on working on that piece. In there, you'll see that they kept the targets. So with all that said, we now recommend conditional approval of the Santa Barbara Charter School. And the conditions are as follows: That the charter school shall implement an educational program in English and Language Arts, English and Language Arts and Math that demonstrates an increase in the academic performance of all its population subgroups. The charter school shall subject as students and shall demonstrate that each of its population and subgroups performs at the same level or better in these subjects as students in the district's similar elementary schools, taking into account the composition of the pupil population that has served at the charter school. The charter school's new academic program and its student success shall be measured by the California Measurement of Academic Performance and Progress, also known as CalMAP. Next condition: The charter shall meet the goals included in its plan to become more diverse as measured by the annual student enrollment date, also known as SEbeds Day. If the charter school does not successfully implement any goal included in the plan by the date assigned to that goal, the charter school shall provide a written explanation for the failure to the district on or before the date assigned. Additionally, LCAP. Charter school's Local Control Accountability Plan shall include the following elements: A definition of the charter school's goals and annual actions to achieve the goals identified in the petition, which are consistent with each of the state priorities and any identified local priorities; A review of progress towards charter school's goals; An assessment of the effectiveness of the specific actions prescribed in the petition towards achieving the goals; And finally, a description of the changes to the specific actions the charter will make as a result of review and assessment. Also, a listing and description of the expenditures for the fiscal year implementing the specific actions to be taken as a result of the reviews and assessments required. The charter shall meet the self-imposed goals included in its LCAP. If the charter school does not successfully implement any goal included in the plan by the date assigned to that goal, the charter school must provide a written explanation for the failure to the district within 30 days following the date assigned to the goal. Low achieving students: The charter school shall implement their plan on page 21 stating how teachers and the charter school staff will identify low achieving students. The plan should also include specific types of monitoring techniques to be used when continuously monitoring this student population. Also, the charter school shall fully implement its English learner program located on pages 19 through 21, and will provide periodic reports to the board regarding the success of its English learner population. The charter school must meet all Title III Annual Measure Achievement Objectives, also known as AMAOs, and provide evidence of its monitoring and the English learner program's success for that respective school year within 30 days of the completion of the school year, of each school year. Lastly, should the charter school fail or be unable to implement any of the above conditions required by the board to renew and maintain their charter, the district may, consistent with applicable law, consider such failure to be grounds for revocation of the charter. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Board, do you want to start with public comment on this?
We have one that I know of, unless you had any more. Sidney Friedman?
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to stand in support, I'm almost going to cry, of the incredible commitment of this school and the teachers and the parents. And as a third-year parent and a second-year board member, I'm so proud to stand here of how hard this team has worked, not just on this renewal, though this is a 20-year-old charter school. And that says a lot in itself, and that part of our board are founding members of the charter school here today as administrators, as teachers, to see this through for hopefully another 20 years. And they have worked diligently beyond due diligence, and they're committed well beyond 100%. And my daughter has flourished at this school, and that means a tremendous amount to me as a parent. And I just want to say thank you to the school and commend my support for the renewal of the charter to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members. Dr. Paz.
So I had a question, and maybe it's just me getting old or something. I thought, as part of one of the comments that we heard Ms. Abrams say that they were going to consider not using siblings as part of the lottery process as a priority. Am I incorrect? Did I hear that wrong? Because I see it in page 42, so I'm just, maybe that was incorrect, and it was something else.
Of the revised petition?
Uh huh.
When I looked that over, I did talk to Bev about that particular item, and they had planned on keeping that in.
Mr. Heron.
Yeah, I think in response to my question, it was the children of former graduates. That was, and I don't think that's in here. I think that's been eliminated.
Other comments? Ms. Limone?
I have just some general comments, I think more than questions. One, I really want to recognize that this is a whole new charter petition. And when I saw it, I know how much work went into it. I know how many hours, how many conversations went into it, because I've been on the other side. So I have to thank everyone involved. This is a whole new charter petition from what first or originally came to us. And I appreciate it, because I think that what's in that charter petition is really a reflection of information that helps us better understand what it is we're providing for students. And I think sometimes requests on behalf of the board or the district sometimes get misconstrued as we just want more paperwork or work. I don't think that's the case. I think that we want more information to rest assured that this is what is best for our students, that there's clear outcomes, that there's a clear process. So I have to thank everyone involved, because this was definitely a whole new charter petition from the original one. Some of the comments that I think I also kind of saw from the individuals that I've talked to throughout this process came up was the Common Core assessment, and not knowing what that means. And I think every one of our schools is in that same boat in the district, and I don't see that as an area that should be, an area that we should be overly concerned with. We all don't know exactly what the assessment's going to be. We don't know what kind of expectations, well, in some ways, what kind of outcomes the state is looking for. So I want to say that all of our schools are in that same boat, charter or not. And by no means would one school be considered to kind of a harder standard than the others. We're just all in this Common Core boat together. I also think that the goals that have been outlined, and I will speak for myself, I'm not speaking for the board or the district, but the goals that have been outlined, I don't see those in any way as being something that we're looking to sanction anyone should they not meet them. I think goals are goals. We do our best to reach them, and I am personally looking for good faith efforts to reach those goals. I'm not looking at ways to sanction any particular school if they're not able to reach the exact goal. But I do think they have to be, there has to be goals. We have to know the direction that the school is moving towards. So again, thank you, I appreciate it. This was long for those members of the public that didn't see how many, hundreds and hundreds of pages were part of this new charter petition. I also look forward to reading the MOU and seeing the facilities use agreements that I know will come forward to us. So I know that those are also part of this process.
Dr. Paz.
Just a quick question, or maybe a future correction. In terms of the MOU, I saw a reference to principal in there, and I know that--
I'm sorry, Dr. Paz, are you talking about in this petition or in the MOU that we're looking at later?
In the MOU.
Maybe, should we just address that in the--
Yeah.
--in the MOU discussion then? Other board members? Mr. Heron?
I would like to echo what Ms. Limone. I mean, this was my weekend, room of paper. I mean, it's 500 pages. You did too much work. Okay? But a job very well done. And I'm happy to see, from what I understand, that the outline of Mr. Handel is satisfactory with the school. I think it, in some ways, is pretty harsh, but I agree that we're not here to try to torpedo the school in any way, shape, or form. We just want it to be a good school. You know, I still have my issues. I still don't think that the lottery system is spelled out clearly. I don't think you could explain it to somebody very easily, the way it's written, anyway. So maybe you'll look into that and figure out how to do it. And I would like, and I'm glad that there was a step towards coming into agreement with our policies and our procedures. And I just hope in 2015, you can be totally in sync. But, and I did notice in there that you do welcome a member of this board to be in liaison with you, although you spell it out as we would be one of your circle of trustees. I can tell you, I don't want to be on a voting committee with any of you. I like to be a liaison, I like to adelante, but I surely hope none of us want to be a voting member of your circle of trustees. And so that's another, if you do want a liaison, I'm sure somebody here would be happy to do it. But, so those are minor things compared to the totality of it, and I just commend all of you for doing such a great job and getting it to this point.
Ms. Idelson?
I want to mention at the state conference I attended with other board members, I attended one specifically on charter and board relations, and I came away from it feeling, after reading all of your work on this petition, that there's really a good sense of what we needed as a board to have from you to legitimately approve this, and I appreciate that, that hard work.
Well, I will just say, first of all, that Mr. Weisman, I'm getting awfully used to seeing you in a suit. But I look forward to seeing you in jeans soon. And I will echo what the other board members have said, a tremendous amount of work, this petition. It's really good. I really feel like you've moved to a level of self-analysis that wasn't there before, and kind of a painful process, but I think it's going to be great for your school, that this is a document that you'll be able to refer to again and again, and that we'll be able to refer to as we monitor you as the years go forward. So thank you. I mean, I'm sure it wasn't just Ms. Abrams and Mr. Weisman on this. I'm sure it was a big team from Santa Barbara Charter, and it is clearly hours and hours of dedication and hard work. So thank you. And as Ms. Limone said, we're going to be looking at the draft of the MOU later in this meeting, and the facilities use agreement. I guess there's a question mark for me. When is that, is there a plan for when that's going to come forward?
We hope that it'll be for a conference item, the first meeting in January.
All right. Okay, so if there are no further comments or questions on this, I do need a motion.
I'll move approval of petition for renewal with conditions for Santa Barbara Charter School.
I will second that.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Heron, seconded by Ms. Limone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
There was one thing that, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I think we all got an email asking for one tiny amendment to the issue.
That is correct.
And it was just the addition of these words, "Additional measures may be used to demonstrate individual student growth if agreed in advance by both the district and the charter school." And I see no problem with that unless anybody else does, and I'd like to move that that be included in the motion.
I will accept the revised motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we've added a slight revision to the petition renewal?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And at this point, we will take Ms. Jete off of the table and go back to Item H3, Positive Certification of First Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2013-14. If there are members of the community here that would like to leave at this point--
I won't be offended.
She'll cry a little bit, but we'll go ahead and maybe we'll just take a two-minute break to let the room clear as needed, okay? break to let the room clear as needed, okay?
Thank you, Bev. We only had to read it, not write it.
So it's just a discussion item, and that's going to be on--
First item.
First item on the conference agenda, so maybe about an hour, 45 minutes from now it'll be on. All right, board members, let's go ahead and come back from our break, our short, super short break. And we will hear from Ms. Jete on H3, Positive Certification of First Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2013-14.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Santa Barbara Unified School District staff has prepared the fiscal year 2013-14 first interim report for the board's review and approval. The short story is, the 2013-14 first interim projects a fund balance greater than the state required, 3%. But there is a longer story, so we might as well just get into it. Those people are very lucky they left. Local Control Funding Formula is now how school districts are funded. The three primary sources are the base grant, the supplemental grants, and the concentration grants. SBUSD staff has set up an unrestricted resource to enable the district to track supplemental and concentration funds to demonstrate the budget supports, that the budget supports the Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. The LCAP is a district site plan that establishes annual goals for all students, described what will be done to achieve these goals, and details how funds will be spent to increase services for English language learners, low-income, and foster youth students. Both the Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF, and the LCAP are tools that the Santa Barbara Unified School District will use to identify spending more, providing more, and achieving more as per the state regulations. The base grant has a specific dollar amount per grade span multiplied by the average daily attendance in the grade span. This is equivalent to what we have been referring to in the past as revenue limit. The supplemental grant is calculated using unduplicated pupil enrollment count for EL, English language learners, low-income, and foster youth students. For the Santa Barbara Unified School District, this represents about 56% of total enrollment. These funds will be tracked to ensure they are spent on students that generate the funding. The concentration grant is an additional funding based on the percentage of unduplicated pupil enrollment count that is greater than 55%. These funds will also be tracked in the same manner as the supplemental grant. Other funding, including in the target amount in 2021, are the add-ons for the Career Tech, CTE program, transportation, both special ed and home-to-school, targeted instructional improvement, class size reduction, and gap funding, which is based on the incremental percentage increase. Santa Barbara Unified should receive an estimated of $121 million in funds by 2021. In addition, the state projects funding a yearly cost of living adjustment, COLA, which should make the Santa Barbara Unified whole prior to the fiscal crisis. Currently, the district's funding gap is approximately $33 million. Can we look at the target amount? This shows what our 2021 target amount is. And at the bottom, you'll see that we are expected to receive 100, almost $121 million. And right now, the base year for 1213 is $87 million, so we have a funding gap of $32 million. So we're trying to achieve a $32 million gap by 2021. That's the plan for the state. So that's approximately $33 million, and the state will fund a percentage of that gap each year over the next eight years. The Legislative Analysis Office is now projecting that the gap will not be achieved by 20, until 2022 or later, as it will be, will depend on the state's recovery. There are significant variances from the adopted budget to the first interim. The main difference is in how the Santa Barbara Unified is funded. LCF combines 24 funding sources totaling $12.4 million into LCF/revenue limit sources, which represents the district's base supplemental and concentration grant amounts in 2021. However, due to the excess property taxes in 2012-13, the district must backfill $7.9 million due to one-time basic aid fair share in 2013-14. Currently, the fair share calculation reduces the district's LCFF base funding, which also reduces the target amount over the next eight years. However, this is a unique problem to Santa Barbara and some other districts, but staff feels confident that this will be resolved in subsequent years, and correction is reflected in the multi-year projections. This is a one of 200 items in the LCFF cleanup language going to the state through the legislation. As of 2013-14 and beyond, basic aid fair share has been eliminated. Therefore, if Santa Barbara receives excess property taxes or redevelopment agency funds, the district will not be subject to fair share. Staff is projecting a slight increase in fund balance for the next two subsequent years. So let's move on to, I want to show you how these categorical funds, these are the list of categorical funds that were not in what we used to call our revenue limit. They were categorical funds. Some of them were on the restricted side of the budget. Some were moved by the tier-three flexibility categoricals on the unrestricted. The ones that are slightly pinkish are the ones that went from restricted to unrestricted side of the budget. So at the bottom, you can see that there was $12.4 million in 1213 that we received. Our fair share was $7.9, due mostly because of $6.9 million in one-time RDA funds, which we believe the, going through legislation, will be removed. And then the total categoricals received for 2013-14 is $4.5 million. Therefore, we have to backfill the $7.9. And when I say that, when it goes through legislation, it will be removed, we use a BAS calculator. It's a term that we use, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But it's the one that the State of California and the Department of Finance is allowing the districts to use, because there's nothing else out there to use. So we expect the legislation to not take the $7.9 for the remaining eight years, but just for 1314. So that's a large group of, a large amount of money that going into the unrestricted side of our budget, which is, you know, good for local control. So here are the differences between the adopted budget and the first interim. Remember that the adopted budget was developed using revenue limit and not LCFF. So you're going to see huge swings here. So in the first category, LCFF, revenue limit sources, you see that it's an increase of about $8.7 million. That is mostly due to the gap funding that we receive, which is $3.8 million. And the swing from the other state revenue, where you used to see some of those tier-three categoricals, are now moved up into the revenue limit sources, or the LCFF sources. They call it LCFF/revenue limit sources, I guess for a transitional period. Also, the reason, some of the reason that that's increased is now EIA is in that number, and so is transportation. Other state, it decreases by $10 million, and that is also almost the flip. Part of it is the backfill that we need to do of the $7.9 million, and the rest of it is just moving from other state to LCFF funding. Are there any questions so far?
Dr. Paz?
So am I correct in saying that the chart on page four, for all of those categorical funding categories, they will no longer exist moving forward? Is that correct?
They're all in those base, supplemental, and concentration.
So essentially, what we're looking at is pre-LCF?
Yes. The only thing that we do keep track of is the home-to-school transportation and special ed transportation. We put that in an unrestricted resource, just so that we could track how much it costs us, because they're still talking about trying to make transportation a little more whole than it is right now.
And we may come back to kind of tracking some of these in aggregate, kind of a fashion, if through our LCAP, we decide to spend money in those categories.
We do track the EIA also separately, because we're planning to put our supplemental and concentration grants in there, so that we can still track, improve, and track it with the LCAP.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Limone?
Sorry. I have just a general question that might be for you, Dr. Cash. So if we're looking at this, and let's just say, I really feel strongly that one of those items on there needs to be protected or saved in some way. How should a board member think about this? Because these are all essentially a wash now, and they're all on a budget. But how do we think about all of this? I mean, do we just sit here and say, okay, it's gone, goodbye?
No. I mean, that'll be part of the, both the public conversation with the community and your public conversation about how we create the LCAP. And we just, actually, the Friday of CSBA, the superintendent's council meeting, we got the Do Not Distribute first draft of the LCAP template, which is, I'm hopeful that they'll simplify it, because it would, it looks like it's 150 to 200-page document that would be required. Right. And I kept thinking immediately of all the small school districts in Santa Barbara County that basically had a superintendent, one more 200-page plan. But what it does is it very clearly delineates what are your needs, based upon what assessment tools, what community information, what are your goals based upon those needs, what are the actions that you're going to take, and then how are you going to spend the money in meeting those goals? So it's a, it has those components. So if the community, the board members feel that math and reading professional development continues to be something that really needs to be supported, the good thing is, it can still be supported, and it may not be, it could be more or less than $101,000, and that's kind of the neat thing about the flexibility with the local control.
Okay. So I should expect that this is really part of the LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan--
Yes.
--which will be a committee of district, community folks that will have input on this. This isn't going away.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
One other-- Mr. Heron, sorry. You just think you're going, Ms. Jete.
And just another way, when I joined the board, you know, there were buckets and buckets of money that had to be spent a certain way. This represents those buckets of money, but these buckets won't exist in the future. And so whether or not we spend the money like this, or on this, or in these amounts, is up to this board. Is that correct?
That's basically the idea. However, we do have to track the children who generate the extra supplemental and the concentration, and that's why we will track the old EIA money.
And I'll chime in here with just that, the wording in that, on page two, where it says, "These funds will be tracked to ensure they are spent on the students that generate the funding," just to clarify that it's, they were really clear down at the CSBA, that this is to benefit those students, which may mean that it benefits all students. It's actually even more flexible than I would say school-wide Title I. If you show a nexus in your LCAP that it's going to benefit students of specific demographic need, if that benefits all students, that's great, as long as your community and your board supports that, and your local superintendent approves it.
Well, and I'll also say that the regulations for LCAP still haven't been approved by the State Board of Education.
That's right.
And they're scheduled for approval on January 15th, they're January 15th, a two-day board meeting, January 15th and 16th. And they first heard them in November, and the LCAP regulation line item was a five-hour discussion. They're anticipating 10-hour discussion on January 15th on this, so I--
All right, I'm going to go, Ms. Limone, and then Dr. Paz.
So I guess that was also my follow-up on this. What does tracking mean? Is it just coming up with a figure of how much we're spending on students who meet the concentration grant, or the supplemental grant? Or the piece that I think Ms. Parker brought up is the benefit, and how do we measure that as a district? And I'm not sure we have an answer right now, the second, but that is another question. What is benefit going to look like? Is that going to translate into some kind of numbers, some kind of progress of sorts, some educational indicators? And I don't know that we know right now.
The interesting thing about that is, the phrase "achieve more" might actually be taken out of the regulations--
Okay.
--because of some issues in relationship to that. But the LCAP should very clearly spell that out. You should be able to see data, goals, activities, funds. I'm hoping it'll get to be that simple.
All right. Dr. Paz?
I just wanted to ask a quick question. If there are plans for us as a district or as a region to go to that 15th and 16th meeting to provide input?
Yes. Yeah, I was asked to testify, so I'm going to give him my 70 seconds. That's how much time you get. I hope it's not a 10-hour item.
Ms. Jete?
Thank you. So the only other thing that I wanted to mention is the other state revenue. Also, we had all of our revenue for the Common Core standards money in other state on the unrestricted side. They have moved that to the restricted side of the budget. So that's another reason why it went down, and that was $2.8 million. Moving on to the unrestricted expenditures, we had increase in salaries and benefits, typically increased between adopted budget and first interim, mainly due to school sites' hiring supplemental support with the funds. However, this year, the reallocation of funds from the restricted budget to the unrestricted budget is the main reason for the increase. For example, EIA was moved from restricted to unrestricted, and routine restricted maintenance, which is our MNO department, basically, was moved from a contribution to the restricted side, to just staying on the unrestricted side. And that, too, we track separately. So that's the increase in the classified salaries right there, most of it. Books and supplies is a net effect of the Common Core and EIA reallocation. Services and operations, this is a large increase due to the two main reasons. The transportation services, which is over $2 million, which is now on the unrestricted side of the budget, and the remaining is EIA and routine restricted maintenance. Unrestricted other finance and uses and sources, not much change there, except for the transfers out. $100,000 to a special reserve fund, which is, we're trying to save for the replacement-- oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question. I was just, when I looked at those numbers, and they add up going across, right to left, or left to right, excuse me. But when you get to that second column, 1718, and then you look at that number in the bottom, that does not make sense. So I could see there's a difference in that first column, 19 to, that 19 is 456, but 1718 to 6,451,952, that doesn't seem to add.
This 6541952 is the amount that we're deficit spending, and I know for a fact that is right, because you can see it in--
So is the difference, is there an error in the 1718 there?
It probably is an error in the, that the calculation did, I don't know how that happens, because it's on Excel.
Well, that net increase/decrease of fund balance takes into account the revenues, the expenditures, and other financing sources and uses.
Oh, I see.
It's more than just this. It's the true bottom line of the prior two charts and this one.
Okay, got it. But when you present it like that, it doesn't add up. So I'm just noting that.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, so the transfers out, one of the items is $100,000 to special reserve to, for the anticipation of replacing athletic fields. And Fund 14 is now part of LCFF. So we moved some money, $514,000, over to the Fund 14 out of the general fund to track our deferred maintenance a little better, instead of having it get lost into the LCAP or the LCFF. And then we just did a reallocation of how we give the charter schools their class-size reduction. So those were the main items for transfers out and other uses. And our contribution increased by 1.5. We moved the nurses from the unrestricted side of the budget, or, I'm sorry, to, yeah, to the unrestricted side of the budget into special ed. And additional certificated full-time equivalents to CATSA alternative high school. And then the increase in caseload for additional staff for special ed, due to the needs of the students as translators, and so we increased our instructional fees by about $100,000. The next slide shows that the change in ending fund balance, the result of 6.5 in a one-time operating deficit for the fiscal year 1314. Throughout the narrative, staff has identified the major differences between adopted budget and first interim due to LCFF. The greatest one-time impact on the ending fund balance of 2012-13 fair share is the 7.9 that we mentioned before. Because most of these funds were allocated to the school sites for their programs, there was never a doubt that the district would not backfill the ending fund balance. Staff believes this reduction will be rectified through legislation and will be a one-time event. And Santa Barbara Unified remains above the 3% reserve for the amount of, in reserve amount for 2013-14. We discussed a little bit, parcel tax has not really changed. The additional funding that we received from going from the old parcel tax to the new parcel tax, it came in pretty close to what we said in the adopted budget. The restricted activity has gotten very small, and due to everything moving from the restricted side of the, not everything, but a lot, moving to the restricted side of the, or unrestricted side of the budget. There's a decrease due to the reduction of revenue limit funding, which did not, does not exist in 1314. These are the changes in the revenue limit sources. Federal revenue is a slight reduction due to the federal sequestration. Other state revenue, increase in after-school, education safety, reallocation of EIA, Common Core funding and transportation, and an increase in restricted lottery. That's all a net effect of all that movement. So you can imagine, we had a lot of fun doing the budget this time, I'll tell you. Other local revenue are all our donation accounts, where we actually have valid numbers to put in there instead of estimates for donations for the sites. Restricted expenditures, net increase is partially due to the following. All nurses moved to special ed from the unrestricted, additional FTE for CATSA, and an increase in the caseloads requiring additional staff. Increase in hours for Santa Barbara translators, increase in EIA's, and the federal funds for hiring school staff, support staff. Services and operating went down due to transportation moving to the unrestricted side of over $2 million in some R&amp;M, routine restricted maintenance and EIA. Capital outlay, additional funds the district received for mental health, which was used in our Center for Therapeutic Education and mostly disturbed programs. Other outgo is due to the reduction of the indirect cost rate for 1314. We had a slight ending fund balance increase for the restricted side of the budget, and the contribution is the same reasoning as on the unrestricted side. Fund balance, we have approximately 2.1 in ending fund balance on the restricted side. 1.4 million of this is the Common Core funding. We anticipate spending 50% of it in 1314 and 50% of it in 1415. Therefore, some of that, 1 point out of the 2.1, 1.4 of it, is a planned surplus, if you want.
And just to clarify--
Yes, Ms. Malone?
Is this is, right now, this is one-time funding?
That's correct. As far as we know today, Common Core of 2.8 is one-time funding. Yes. The encroachment, so the contribution, basically, for the Santa Barbara Unified District, we used to have like five or six items in it. Now it just has special education, continuing education, and some just miscellaneous resources for the unrestricted side. So move on to the ending fund balance reserve. We're proud to say that we have a 7.52%, including the special reserve fund for Fund 17. That's in the purple. The white is the restricted side of the budget, and the unrestricted side of the budget is the blue. So we'll move on to the ADA, and, well, lottery went up just a little bit. That's always a help. We're still projecting that our ADA basically is going to remain with a slight decrease, but not anything substantial. So the multi-year projections are also in our BAS calculator, which we're allowed to use for the state, and the Department of Finance gives us a three-year projection. And one of the biggest items on that BAS calculator is that gap funding I was talking about, that we have a percentage each year allocated according to CDE, what they're going to be able to afford to give us of that gap funding out of the 33 million. So it's interesting, because they're expecting a huge increase next year of 16.49%, and then I think it's a 19% or an 18% the following year. However, other people are saying they don't feel it's going to get anywhere near that. So what do you do? So I took it by 50% and figured I'll be right in there somehow. Either I'll be too low, or hopefully I won't be too high on the revenue. So we put in the COLA of 1.87 for 1415, and 1.99 for 1516. And with the gap funding, we reduced what the state says that we may get from 16% to 8%, and for 18%, we reduced it to 9.3%. So in looking at this, you can see that we go up substantially in 1415, and that is due to what I believe is that we are not, I'm anticipating that we will not be hit for that 6.9 million of one-time RDA money. However, there is an additional $1 million that we naturally went into basic aid, even though we deficit into basic aid. I'm still arguing that point, that it's, we're one-time, we shouldn't be penalized for that, and we have several people working on that in higher places than Santa Barbara. So--
City's up north of Santa Barbara. Maybe not higher places, but--
Yeah, more north.
Ms. Malone?
Sorry. We may not, do we, I mean, there may never be resolution for that, because there are people in higher places or different places in Santa Barbara working on it. But do we think we might get that resolved in the 2013-14 year? Or will that not be resolved this year?
The 2013-14 year, since we had a fair share in 1213, they're taking it in 1314. So there's no way--
Nothing.
--that we will not retrieve that money. But I don't want them taking it for the next eight years. And we really believe that the 6.9 million one-time RDA, we're almost 100% guaranteed that that is not going to continue out. And they have corrected the BAS calculator to show that. So that's good. However, I do have that 1 million out there that I don't want them to take that either. So we are fighting that with FICMAT, where they're helping us, and SSC is helping us. DOF is on board, the only person that's not a CDE. So--
And they're low, they have a staffing problem. We're just going to roll right over them.
Yeah. We'll just keep pounding and keep pounding. Okay, so the only thing that I, there are a couple things that I want to point out. This is unrestricted and restricted side of the budget for, and I'm looking at the year 1415. And you can see in other state that there's a real decrease right there of, I don't know how much, I'm sorry, but it's probably close to about 2.5 or 2.8 million, and that's the Common Core. I'm considering that, since we have no more data, that we're going to get any more Common Core after 1314, that we will not receive it. But half of it is still in that fund balance in 1415, because we're only spending 50%. So you get down there by the fund balance, and you can see that we're, it looks like we're deficit spending 1.8 in 1415, but we are not, well, we are, but it's all due to Common Core, which is 1.4 million. So, and it's an estimate, it's a whole year out. Multi-year projections are just as good as what the information you have today. So, anyway, we're anticipating a 7.83 ending fund percent, ending fund balance for 1415 and 1516, 8.54. But as I said, multi-year projections are kind of sketchy at this time. So that's pretty much all I have. Does anybody have any questions? Board?
Ms. Idelson?
And the federal doesn't change. Is that right?
The federal remains flat--
Okay.
--until we find out more about that in 1415, it will remain flat.
Do you anticipate that it could, I mean--
Well, I hope the sequestration part, the 8%, or the 5.23% goes away. That would be nice. But we don't have that many federal funds. We have Title I, Title III--
Title II.
Title II.
About how much does that amount to?
Title I's about 3 million. Title II is about, I don't know.
I think it's over a million.
Yeah, it's over a million.
Mr. Herron?
They did announce a budget agreement today that alters sequestration, so hopefully that's good news in some way.
Yeah.
Dr. Paz?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do. I know a lot of this is just, you know, plugging away at numbers, but, you know, and a lot of it is assumption right now, because until after the new year, we'll know a lot more. But regardless, this is a lot of work, and I certainly appreciate all the work that you do.
Well, it's not just me. I have a great, I have a great staff.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
I have a quick question on your splitting the difference in terms of the percentages. What are other districts doing? Are other districts following this? Is this something that was a recommendation from SSC, or?
Well, when I heard first off that SSC came out with like 4.5%, when the state was saying 16.49, I was like, God, that's a huge spread. So we started talking. I start talking to my other CBOs, and--
We were all basically down south at the CBO symposium, and we were all talking about how we're due a 50% reduction. Some were taking the difference between 5 and 6.4 and splitting that difference. So School Services of California was actually saying yes during their report plan. So you are being very cautious.
Out there. No, you're out there with--
Well, I'm in between, which I thought was a good place to be.
And there are some districts that are plugging in the entire percentage that CDE is saying into their multi-year projections, and I think where our conservative nature is going to bode well for us.
All right. Mr. Herron?
Did I read in here someplace that movement of $1 million into the maintenance reserve in 1415 or 1516?
Yes. In 1516, we planned to take our routine restricted maintenance and add the $1 million on that we took away back in, what, 2009-10, I believe it was. We reduced our staff, and, you know, and here we have all this bond money, and we're working on all these facilities. We got to get our routine restricted maintenance up again to take care of this.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thanks. I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Until that legislation is taken care of, I won't be, I won't be, you're very confident, but I, you know, I'll just feel better once it's done.
And that, they will not take that all. Those 200 items will go in 1415.
Is it going to be one package that moves through, or are they going to do it on an item-by-item basis through the legislature?
The, what I heard at the CBO symposium is they're taking it all at once, and I'm thinking there may be more by the time they get there.
You have to remember that this was a one-size-fits-all calculator approach to districts. I mean, we've discovered there are multiple districts that got large RDA checks a week before, two weeks before the end of their fiscal year last year, just like us. So I would imagine, I was not here as a superintendent when the revenue limit process was created, but I would imagine there were just as many mistakes with that one-size-fits-all as we're getting with LCFF. I can tell you, though, that I'm not going to be satisfied in waiting too long, in that if necessary, I'll work with both Assemblyman Williams and Senator Jackson to get legislation, and probably also work with General Counsel Craig Price, in trying to draft legislation that benefits our community.
One thing that I do want to say is that with that, with the asset release, the RDA asset release, there's other districts that are in the same position. Both CDE, DOF agree that that should not be in the, for eight years. So I have really high confidence that that will be taken out. I'm just working on the last little piece right now.
All right. If there are no further comments or questions, I need a motion on this positive certification.
I'll make the motion for positive certification of the first interim financial report for fiscal year 2013-14.
All right. There's a motion by Dr. Paz.
I will second that.
And a second by Ms. Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now move to item H5, Approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Plan for Common Core State Standards Implementation Funds.
As board members are aware, at the November 13th board meeting, the district will receive, and you've heard about it again through the first interim, $2.8 million that are restricted to three areas of expenditures: professional learning, instructional materials, that are Common Core aligned, and technology. And our plan proposes, based on the input from our schools, that 30% of those funds be spent on professional learning, 30% be spent on instructional materials, and 40% be spent on technology. The plan, as recommended by just everybody, is general, with the understanding that on or before July 1st, 2015, the board will receive a very detailed listing of the expenditures made in those three areas. And if by chance the circumstances change, or there is some need to change those percentages, you will have before you for discussion any proposed change different than the 30-30-40 split.
All right. Board. You guys are clearly burning issues on this one. Ms. Malone?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Santa Barbara Unified School District Plan for Common Core State Standards Implementation Funds.
Second.
A second by Mr. Herron. I'll only add that this was a huge conversation going on down at the California School Boards Association Conference, with it coming up again and again, that this, most board members and superintendents feeling that this was about a third of what was needed, and hoping to see this continue out at least two more years. There's going to be quite a push to see if this can, we can essentially triple this funds ultimately, but it's not there yet. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. We've passed the approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Plan for Common Core State Standards Implementation Funds. Moving on to item H6, this is Board Action on Student Discipline, case number 2013/14-10. Mr. Herron?
I'll move approval in 2013/14-10 for the stipulated agreement calling for a suspended full expulsion ending June 2014.
So there's a motion to approve the stipulated agreement. Is there a second? I'll second it. Seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we are at item I1, Discussion of Memorandum of Understanding Between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and the Santa Barbara Charter School. Dr. Cash?
I'm going to ask Mr. Handel, since he's been the primary negotiator on this with the charter school, and we also-- the charter school, and we also have with us in the audience our charter school counsel, Devin Lincoln, to answer any questions that we may have.
So before you have the proposed memorandum of understanding for the Santa Barbara Charter School, what you'll see is on number four are the conditions for, for renewal. Aside from that, all the language is pretty standard. However, if you have any questions, please send them away.
Dr. Paz?
My only comment was to, because I know it's kind of a standard form in a lot of different ways, that we kind of look at the places where it says principal and we replace it with the respective parties. Because I know there's a couple of places where it says that. And I just passed one, for example. Somewhere in page, there's a couple actually in here somewhere.
Are you stating, Dr. Paz, to the, to the term principal? Is that the term that they use?
Yeah.
We'll go through there and remove that.
We can clean that up.
Dave, Dave, we should hear from, Dave, I saw Bev earlier. Oh, Bev's still here, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I haven't had a chance to talk yet, but President Parker, thank you. And I assure you, you won't see me too often in a suit. My son only has one. So, I've already worn it twice, that's probably the limit. My other son has one, I might borrow it too, though. There is one section in the MOU, we've reviewed that with Mr. Handel, and again, thank you, Emilio, for all of the hard work that you offered for this entire charter renewal process. We know it was as demanding for you as it was for our teachers and our staff and, and we really want to express our appreciation again for you to go through all that for us. You make reference in the last, one of the last pages of the MOU draft of Government Code 1090, which is our conflict of, which is a conflict of interest code. It's basically one of several that the state offers. This particular code is very restrictive and disallows staff members as board members of the school, but our school is entirely based on that. So Government Code 1090 does not work for us. We have submitted to you our conflict of interest statement, which is also a state form and is, I think, comprehensive enough to satisfy the conflict of interest standards. We hope that you can adapt that one rather than Government Code 1090, which simply does not work for our organization.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
I, sorry, I'm like juggling between my, between documents here and I'm afraid it's, Novus is kicking me out. I just wanted to clarify on the enrollment piece. The enrollment cap for the school is 285, is that correct?
It's correct.
And so, the, and I'm not sure if we can pull the enrollment piece up here on the screen.
What page and section are you referring to?
Sorry, I'm waiting for Novus to let me back in again. It's below the diversity goals, I think you keep going. You could probably just control find for enrollment.
It's on page 8 to 16.
All right.
So, let me just pull it up this way. So, the, and I just, I don't know how closely that's been being monitored in terms of the enrollment timelines and enrollment projections. Is this, is this what has been happening in the past or is this just, is this a little bit closer monitoring coming forward in the future?
This is a little closer monitoring.
Okay. Is there something else, Ms. Chetay?
I don't know, Ms. Chetay.
You guys are thinking about it? Remember, this, this is not on for a vote. This is on for discussion, so we can...
The block grant, is that what?
I was going to mention that we were talking about having a, would you like to talk about this, Devin?
I think I can just say your question.
Yes.
So, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your question is, should there be a specific cap in this agreement on enrollment? Is that your question?
Well, I think President Parker was asking that, but we discussed about having a cap on non-classroom-based enrollment.
Right, right. And that'll be embodied in the facilities use agreement.
Okay.
Because that's a facilities issue, is what the facility can accommodate, both for classroom and non-classroom students.
Then why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm Devin Lincoln. I'm attorney with Losano Smith, working on charter school matters.
Okay, so, I was just thinking about it in terms of how, how closely are we monitoring it and how regular are we monitoring it? But it's good to know that that's going to be looked at, not just in the petition, but also in the facilities use agreement that's coming forward, so I appreciate that, yes?
P1, P2, and P annual, I review all the attendance.
Yes. All right, any other comments? This is on, on for discussion, so I'm assuming this will be back at our first meeting in January?
Yes, along with, at that time, also the draft of the FUA, hopefully, for, as a conference item.
All right, Ms. Limone?
So, one last comment, and this doesn't actually need to be put in the MOU, but as I read through this, and I don't know what page it was on, but where it talked about the minutes, I realized I didn't see the minutes online. And so, I've kind of been thinking about the minutes because I know that other charter schools forward minutes and I just...
Minutes of their board meetings? Okay, all right.
And it doesn't have to be part of the MOU, but either, no, no, yeah, and that, and actually that, because I've received them via email and I haven't had access to them on websites, it really made, on a website, and I thought, well, what about the public? And so it's kind of a more overarching issue with accessibility to minutes. And I didn't really need to make this a condition of the charter school, but I wanted to throw it out there because I, I think it would be a good idea if we encourage our schools to move in that direction so that any member of the public can access that, but I don't need to make this a condition of this. I'm reading the charter, it came up, I'm bringing it up, but it doesn't need to be a condition of this.
Yes, and I could see that's something that comes toward perhaps, since we should be getting minutes from all of our charter schools, it could simply be posted in the board brief section that is available for our website, although it'd be great for the charter schools to have them on their websites. But yeah, I agree, it does need to be part of, of the MOU. Anything else? Mr. Herron?
I think you will notice under adelante, they now are included on the website under adelante, so the minutes and the agenda are both there.
Awesome. Great. All right, then this will come back to us in January, and if you have anything that you haven't thought of, you can go ahead and email Dr. Cash about it. And we will move on to item I2, an update on implementation of the new Munis Financial System. Mr. Tedeschi?
I just wanted to introduce our Director of Fiscal, who you all know, Conrad Tedeschi, but I also wanted to introduce Lacy Preston, who is our dispersing officer, who you probably have not met as of today. And these two are leading the charge on our new financial system, Munis, and believe me, it is a big charge. And I just want to thank them for both doing a great job on this and I will let them get started on their presentation.
Okay, I'm going to try to keep it a little bit brief, but I want to make sure you understand what all we are going through in doing this because I really feel as if we're doing this the right way. Back in April 2013, we brought to your board the idea of replacing our financial system, the existing system that we really feel had a lot of shortcomings and wasn't working so well for us. And we selected a system that we strongly feel is going to be a great vast improvement for the school district, not only for the business offices, but for the, the business offices at the school sites, the principals, people approving requisitions and getting human resources actions online and all of those wonderful things that are going to come with this system. Some of the modules involved here, as far as this system, just to kind of revisit it a little bit, we're doing payroll, human resources, position control, budgeting, purchasing, accounting, accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets, and inventory, all of those wonderful things that excite me a whole lot, but may not excite the rest of you very much. But it is a pretty important part to the foundation of how we run this district and keeping track of things. Since you approved the contract, we kicked off this project and in June, we had our kickoff meeting, which is kind of the official time when the sales team from Tyler Technologies handed it off to the implementation team. And they are truly teams. I mean, this Tyler Technologies company is big. They have over 4,000 K-12 clients for their various products, you know, worldwide. They have school districts in Canada and other, other parts of the world. They have a couple hundred school districts here in this country on Munis and a couple in the state. It's relatively new in the state, but we really feel it was the right thing to, to bring that here. So, the target for full implementation of the system is July 1, 2014. And this is not a process that goes a week or two weeks or a month or two. This is truly going to be a year-long process that involves a number of people doing a lot of work on top of their work. And so I kind of felt bad this time through the budget process, I wasn't able to help Meg as much as I usually did because we've been in a conference room over there for hours on hours, you know, for a lot of days since July 1. So we had our kickoff meeting, we had the software installed. They sent out a software engineer who was, looked to be young enough to be my son, but the guy was fantastic and spent two days here installing the product, going over with Todd Rickman and his staff and, and me about how to maintain it, how to back it up and doing all those, a real official checklist of things that he did and our responsibilities going forward, which is something about this company, they definitely have a plan on how to install a system and how to implement a system. It's not just installing, but they've done this many times before and they have teams of people supporting this. So we really feel like we're going to be well-supported with the, the small group of people we have here and the whole company behind them there. So, after they installed it, we started putting our teams together. That's when, you know, I kind of got set up as a project manager and Lacy here is right there with me. I mean, I couldn't do this without her. We're doing this together and working with a lot of the different divisions throughout the district office. For now, we've got teams set up in HR and payroll, we have purchasing, we have accounts payable, so each of those teams has a functional leader that works with the staff, that works with us, that works with Tyler to make sure all of their needs are going to be met in the system. I mean, it's not just about me and Lacy making decisions for the different divisions, letting them know how this is going to work. This is about them working with us and us letting Tyler know how we need it to work. So, this is truly a group effort. And then Tyler Technologies, they bring different people to different meetings on different topic areas. It's, we have one project manager who's running the whole show for them, but depending on the functional area we're working on, they have an expert in, let's say, purchasing or general ledger, she'll come for two weeks. We have a different expert in HR and payroll, they'll come for two weeks. So, so far in this process, after we formed the teams, we went into these what we called analysis sessions. And these were pretty grueling. They were about, let's see, we met for 13 days over the course of two months, about seven hours a day in each functional area with the different teams, you know, working with their experts, saying, okay, here's what we do, can you do that? And then they'll say, well, we can do that better, we can do it this way. And then, so it was a lot of back and forth. Here's what we need to do. And they understand our business and what our needs are and they kind of incorporate that into a laundry list of things, of how things are going to work going forward. So, those analysis sessions were really important. It was grueling, but it was, you know, really important for them to understand what we want to do. So, once we got through that, they documented a lot of those conversations we had to make sure three months later, we can go back and recover what we had discussed as we really start working on the implementation. So, after these analysis sessions, a big part of what Lacy has done, and I'll let her take over from here, was the data conversion, so.
So, we've been busily working on converting our data, data that's in our current financial system and starting to move it over to Munis. So, so far, we have accomplished moving our entire chart of, chart of accounts into Munis. That was over 16,000 accounts that we have loaded into Munis. So now, when we log into Munis, we can see our complete chart of accounts sitting in there. So, up next for conversion, we will be putting all our employees into Munis, along with all of the position control. And next will be all of our vendors. So this will be a process that'll be ongoing for the next couple of months.
And just so you know, that general ledger, the chart of accounts piece was huge and Lacy did 99% of it. And it was taking our accounts, adding descriptions, doing, putting it in their format so, to load it into their system. And the way it works is we send them our template and then they go through it and send back all of our errors. And we did it in two passes. The first pass, we got our errors back and then we fixed every single pass, every single error. So by the time the second pass, it was done and we loaded up. And our project manager said some districts will take 10 or 15 passes to get their whole chart in, and Lacy did a fantastic job with that.
I think it looks beautiful.
See, it's exciting to us.
One thing that I want to point out with these two is that they, you know, as grueling as this is, they always have smiles on their faces and they, they're, they're working really well together and they're such a team. And, and everyone is very supportive from HR all the way down to IT, and we couldn't do it without that whole coordination of effort of people. But one thing I want to say about Munis, and then I'll, I won't, I won't say anymore, is that we came out of a meeting about Affordable Care and I, I was thinking, oh my gosh, how are we going to track this? And Munis was here. I walked in and I said, what are you guys doing about this? Within the end of the day, I had a list, some, some, I, some guy back east sent me this whole thing, we are doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this, we know you have these, this, this, and this. They're on it. And that is a really reassuring for me about, you know, how we're going to get the data out of there to track things like that.
Yeah, it's, it's been interesting. We'll be in the middle of analysis meeting and Meg will bust into the door and make a demand, and I need to make sure it does this. We'll talk about it, pretty much.
So, while data collection is going on, we are also doing this data management testing, which is us getting to see how Munis does that in its system. And we also are on the organization and purchasing system, so we're starting our testing. So, and then all of this is on the, on the, on the, on the system. But we do have a calendar, which was nice from the beginning. We set up a calendar of what to expect for the next 12 months as we go through this implementation. And, you know, it has moved around here and there based on things going on here and, you know, with their scheduling, but it's been really great so that I can let all the staff know, because they're having to do a lot of work on this too. I can, I give them homework, you know, we give them homework where you've got, you know, two or three weeks to get, to meet these milestones, to get these things done. So, and Tyler has really helped us with the, that project management piece to really set, you know, goals and milestones and benchmarks and things we need to have done. And over the holidays, we have a lot of work to do and so, you know, so it'll be quiet, nice and quiet around here, so we're hoping to get a lot of that done as we move forward beginning February and going all the way through 2000, you know, July of, going live date, we're setting up all the functional areas. We're going to train our staff here as we load our data and as we're testing, we're going to, we're going to be involving the staff, we're going to be doing the work, because I feel like that's an important way to implement a system, is have staff involved, you know, throughout so they can ask questions before we go live. And then our, we're planning to do...
And then, our, we're planning to do at least two parallel payrolls, full parallel payrolls. What Lacey was talking about, we took 10 employees and we put them in with deductions and earnings and we tested the calculations and all that in the static testing. By the time we get to April of 2014, we plan to have all of our employees loaded in, all of our earnings codes and deduction codes and voluntary deductions and all of the tax tables, all that stuff in place so that we can run these parallel payrolls for a couple of months. Because when we get to July 1, I want to be sure that we can run a payroll. And I have a feeling that this system may calculate payroll more correctly and more accurately than the current system we're, we're using. So, I'm really looking forward to that. So, I think we're on, we are on schedule. We've done a lot of work so far and we still have a lot of work left to do, but just want you to know that we're walk, we're working hard on this on top of our regular jobs that, you know, and all the staff is. And I think everybody is, sees the light at the end of the tunnel and we're really looking forward to it because I think we have a really good piece of software here that we're going to work with. And I can't wait to show it to the principals and to the sites. And I plan to do a lot of that training myself. I want it in with Lacey. You know, when we go out to the sites, I want it to be us because we're working with them to make this work. I want us, them to see our face involved that we're, we've bought into this. This is what we're going to do and we're going to make it work for you. So, this isn't just about making the business office work better. It's about, you know, processing purchase orders quicker, you know, getting, you know, employees reimbursed, you know, for their travel quicker and, you know, all of those things, human resources things, get employees added quicker, all of that stuff. We really feel strongly it's going to happen here, so.
And principals being able to see their budgets is a nice thing also.
Yes. And we'll be able to like throw reports at them. So, when they log in, their budget report will just fly out there so they, so they can really keep track. Because we really don't feel like they have that kind of access. We're emailing reports to principals each month because the current system is just not set for them to really sit down and figure out and it's just kind of, you know, not what we're looking to do. So, if there's any questions, that's pretty much what I have.
Dr. Paz.
So, do you guys estimate that this will be easier to do in the future?
No, it does, Munis does a lot, but it won't do that.
It's not solving the LCFF and the OCA.
Doesn't solve our budget problems either.
At least generating this would be easier.
That's in a, that's the state.
Software. The, the, all the forms are all from the state documentation. It's not, it's nothing, we will probably be able to pull out better reporting so that they, we could just plop them in here instead of having to create an Excel spreadsheet, so.
And we think we'll be able to monitor that better through the year, month to month, week to week than just, you know, when you get that report. And I think the steps to produce that report, to get the data out, will be a little easier to manage as well, so.
Any other comments? I will just add, you know, watching this process, and thank you for the update because as board members, it's really actually, it's, it's going on in the background, but it's something that we need to be super concerned about. If it goes wrong, it can be a disaster. And I appreciate hearing what you're planning to do for payroll because that is where it really would be a disaster if it doesn't work. I think staff can be very forgiving of lots of glitches in a new system coming in. They are not forgiving for payroll mistakes. And so, I'm looking forward to other updates as the year goes along. And I, I know it's more than fingers crossed, it's hard work to make sure that this is going well. And man, you guys, I'm so glad you love your jobs. That's, that's great.
No, this is exciting. We will make this work and it really is exciting to be a part of. It really is.
Well, I'm looking forward to, to really seeing it when it's done and, and sort of seeing it, you know, some screenshots of what's going on that you can do now that...
I thought about that for tonight, but I wasn't going to wow you with like the account maintenance master screen with our chart of accounts. It really isn't that fun.
Man, that, that chart would have been nice, but okay, next time. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we are now at our final item, item I-3, which is Tatum Property Conceptual Presentation of Senior Housing Project. Dr. Cash.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Tatum property consists of approximately 22.86 acres of undeveloped land. It was acquired by the district in approximately 1965 for possible use as a junior high school site. As a result of the changing demographics, which were confirmed by the long-term study recently reviewed by the Board of Education, it's been recognized that as a site, this remains unneeded for educational purposes in our district. Currently, the site is zoned for residential development at 3.3 units per acre. A little history for our board members that weren't here, beginning in 2004, the district began to explore options for the possible development of the Tatum site, along with the development of the Hidden Valley site at that time. Following a recommendation from the District Real Property Advisory Committee, the Board of Education initiated a feasibility study to evaluate the site to, that would include below-market rate housing for district employees with the district retaining ownership of the land. As part of the process that ensued, the County Board of Supervisors did grant or waive the Naylor Act to facilitate the development by the district. But as all of us know, the planning effort was discontinued as a result of the economic circumstances that ensued and other factors as well. But the district's interest in continuing to explore responsible development options remained. The district staff's preference, I won't speak for the board, for development, has always been to maintain ownership of the underlying fee interest in order to allow revenue generated from any development to be used for general fund purposes. I want to let the board know that we as a staff have considered several potential options and one sunshine, one idea is for senior housing. And it came from the Pikert Group Architects here in Santa Barbara. I've asked the principal of the firm to make a presentation to the board this evening. He is here and also with him is our General Counsel Craig Price.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. President Parker, board members. My name is Detlev Pikert. I'm an architect. I've been practicing in Santa Barbara for about 30 years. I'm the founder of Pikert Group Architects, which is now Pikert RRM Design Group. And I want to just thank you for the opportunity here tonight to present some ideas to you that I think could have very significant economic benefits for the school district over the future of the, of the property. Also with me here tonight is Lisa Plowman, who has, who's our planning manager and has 25 years' experience as a planner and 11 years actually working for the county of Santa Barbara. So, before I get into the, some of the ideas I want to present to you for the development of the Tatum site, I'll just give you a little bit more background on my experience in developing and designing projects, development projects in the Santa Barbara area and Southern California. So, if you go to the next slide, these are just a few projects, some of which you might be familiar with, projects that we've developed, some of which are market rate housing. And we also specialize in affordable housing and particularly senior housing. One of the projects here is Casas Las Granadas. You're probably familiar with that. It's across the street from the library and kind of creates a skin on the, on the face of the big parking granada, granada parking garage. Another one that you're familiar with, perhaps if you drive down Correa Boulevard near the freeway, is Casas, Casa de las Fuentes, which is in the middle at the bottom there. That is an affordable housing project for downtown workers, et cetera. But I want to just focus a little bit on some senior housing experience. If you go to the next slide, this is kind of an iconic project that we not only designed, but we're actually the developers with a couple of other partners. It's called Garden Court. It's at the corner of De Lavina and Annapooh Street. It's a 98-unit senior housing project for very low-income seniors in Santa Barbara. If you drive down the street, I'm sure you, you've probably noticed it. It's a big, kind of yellow complex there. And we're designing a, a number of other senior projects, one of which is just underway in the county right now in Santa Inez. It's about 150 unit, unit senior campus that is, includes assisted living, memory care, independent living and some staff housing as well. So, tonight, I just want to tell you a little bit about an idea that I had along with my colleague Lisa Plowman for the potential development of the Tatum property. So, before I get into the details of that, I'm thinking, flip to the next slide, just want to mention that I actually have quite a bit of familiarity with the property because in 2005, as Dr. Cash pointed out, you undertook an RFP process to explore some development opportunities there, which did not move forward. And we participated, I participated with the Berman Development Company as one of the proposers of, of some development scenarios for the site. I've walked the site many times and I've often thought, once this, the project kind of went back into slumber mode, we had some ideas that we really felt that there is an opportunity here, particularly with the evolution of the Guelita Community Plan and the, the goal of the county to utilize this site as an opportunity housing site in it, in the Guelita Community Plan and rezoning it for 20 units per acre for the approximately 13 acres that could be developed, or approximately 10 acres would remain in open space. So, when we started thinking, "Well, what, what could one develop here that really made sense, that would have the least impact, negative potential impact on, on neighborhood and that would address a very increasingly growing need in the community, in the state, in this country, which is to provide senior housing?" I don't know how familiar you are with some of the statistics, but the senior population in California is expected to almost double over the next 20 years or so, in 20, by 2030. I think approximately 16,000 people turn 65 every day in California. So, you can just imagine, this is, we're kind of on a bit of an exponential curve here that is partly generated by the baby boom generation now as we're aging into life in, as, as senior citizens. So, we, we really felt that this was an opportunity to explore the concept of a senior housing project. And we took the initiative on a pro bono basis to come up with a site plan, just to see what sort of configuration might work on this site. And on the, the next slide, you'll see kind of what we came up with. And again, it's a very conceptual drawing at this point, but it does give you some sense of how something might evolve on the site for a senior project. So, just if you look in the lower right-hand corner over here, you see a, a building that would represent, in this scenario at least, a memory care and assisted living facility consisting of approximately 80 units. And then, to the left of that, you'll see a, a number of different buildings that represent independent living and, you know, various levels of care for seniors living in that, in those buildings. And then, in the middle there, you have the, the usual common facilities, a clubhouse and all the various sort of ancillary uses that, that go along with providing the kind of environment where seniors can, can live and go through all the phases of, of life as they, as they continue to age. And then, you'll see quite a bit of open space and that, that represents the approximate 10 acres that the county has designated as being required to remain in, in some form of open space. As you know, there's quite a bit of vegetation on it. There's some oak, oak groves and environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And so, we've, we've kind of identified those in this scheme and shown them as open space that could be developed for public uses and trails and also for the enjoyment of the senior community that might end up living on this property in the future. Again, so there, there are a lot of compelling reasons why a senior project works so well on this site. First of all, it's a beautiful site. Having walked it many times, I, I really have a sense of a vision for a, a development that could be stunningly beautiful with all the existing, you know, trees and oak tree groves and trails that could be incorporated into the development. And, you know, even as you get sort of higher up on the site, there's some, you know, beautiful views of the mountains and even some views towards the ocean, et cetera. So, it's a, it's a great site for that. But what's, what's really interesting is that, you know, people often react negatively to development proposals, but the, the, the kinds of proposals that people react least negatively to are senior housing projects. And the reason is because seniors typically do not have nearly the, the sort of traffic impacts that, say, a family housing project would typically have. And I think people see it as a kind of a more benign use in some way. And so, that's one of the reasons, knowing the sensitivity to future development in, in the Guelita, unincorporated Guelita area, we felt that a senior project really would be a great opportunity. Also, it really lends itself to the possibility, or to the concept, I should say, of doing a development on leased land because basically you're, you're creating rental units here so that you're not having to sell condominiums in which you really are selling the property effectively. So, in this instance, the leased land concept works really well. And one of the things that we explored with some of the developers that we've spoken with about the feasibility of this proposal is the, the possibility of doing some sort of profit sharing with a developer. In other words, becoming kind of a, something of a partner with a developer where you not only receive land lease payments, but you could actually participate in the, in the long-term income that a project like this generates. And, you know, we, we were getting creative about how this could really, how, how some other ideas might be incorporated. We know that there's a nursing program over at San Marcos High School just across the street. And we thought that we could incorporate into the project a facility, maybe a classroom facility or something, where those nursing students could participate in learning about assisted living care and other kinds of nursing care that might be provided in this facility. So, it could provide a really interesting symbiotic relationship for the school district and the students and program that they, that you have over at San Marcos High School. So, you know, we've, we've given this, this a lot of thought. And after we developed this concept, we, we met with Dr. Cash and his staff, Craig Price, and presented these ideas. And our impression was that they were excited about it, that they thought this had some real potential and it was worth exploring. And of course, that's why I'm here tonight. We, one, one other thing that we wanted to do to kind of vet the proposal, besides just speaking with developers, was to meet with the county and determine whether or not, with the county planning staff, planning director, et cetera, and determine how they would respond to a, a proposal like this and, and what would be the, the process for moving a project of this nature forward, given that they're still, still working on the ultimate approval of the Guelita Community Plan. And we had a meeting, Dr. Cash attended, Mr. Price attended as well and Lisa Plowman did. We talked about a lot of issues about the project. And generally, we got a very favorable response. I think they thought this was a great concept, great proposal, one that they would welcome going forward. The, one dynamic, of course, that, that came up in the discussion is the fact that they are preparing an EIR now for the Guelita Community Plan, something that's required prior to the Board of Supervisors passing that plan, the update to the plan. And we wondered, you know, could we move forward sooner than later? Because of course, the sooner this thing moves forward, the sooner it's going to generate cash for the, cash flow for the district. And they were very open and favorably disposed toward a sort of concurrent processing of an application of this nature. And it also presents an opportunity where they could incorporate into the EIR that's being prepared now, a senior housing as an alternative that would be studied in the EIR so that that information could be, you know, available to the public in terms of comparison, a comparison of different project scenarios. So, the timing to move forward is good. I'm not sure exactly when that EIR will be completed, but I think it's expected to be done in the spring of, of next year, at which point, if the board so chooses to, to move forward with a, a concept of this nature, you know, we could be potentially well underway by the time the EIR is presented and adopted. And the question of course arises, and how does the board move forward? I mean, ideally, I would like to bring a developer forward and just say, "Let's negotiate a, a deal." But we, we recognize that as a public agency, the, the district needs to go through a public process, an RFP process potentially. And we welcome that opportunity. As an architect and as the sort of initiator of this concept, if you will, I would be very excited to myself... excited to myself, work with a developer and be among the people and other developers that might actually propose and respond to an RFP that, should the district move forward with a process of that nature. So that, that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have. And of course, Lisa Plowman is also here if you have specific sort of land use questions, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. All right, board members, here's an initial look at the conceptual site plan. What would you like to share about this? Comments or questions? Mr. Herron?
Yeah, it's the first real thing that I've seen, you know, visually like this. I wasn't around when they did the previous studies, but it's impressive. Thank you.
Ms. Limone?
I think it's an interesting idea. I trust that we've considered multiple ideas, and this is an idea that's coming forth. This presentation also reminds me that between now and anything happening, we do have to just think about the property as a whole. We've had some issues. To me, this, in addition to this being an interesting idea as far as increasing our revenues of sorts, there's also a safety issue involved with this property that I think would be something that we want to consider as far as what happens and what doesn't happen on this property. So I think it's important to have this conversation sooner rather than later. I absolutely believe it does need to be a public and open process, and, and that's very important to me as far as how we move forward and how we think about this idea or any other ideas. But I think it's interesting.
Dr. Paz?
So, right now, through the discussion that the staff have had and, and others have with the county planning department, what would be the soonest timeframe for this to even move forward as, as an open process or entertaining bids?
I think, Mr. Price, would you be willing to answer those questions?
Lisa, excuse me, Lisa talked to the county project planner today, I believe. She just whispered to me. But when we met with the county a couple of months ago, I guess it was, they go through a number of steps with this EIR process that's underway, and they were expecting that after it would go to the planning commission, it would go to the Board of Supervisors sometime around the end of next year, and then it needs to get a thumbs up from the state organization that oversees growth issues in terms of new housing units that are being required. So they're expecting that there would be an approval by the spring of 2015, which would give your board just about the right amount of time if you elected to move forward conceptually in order to have things meld more or less simultaneously. Interestingly, Lisa was on board with, was the project planner for the county a decade ago when we were looking at below-market housing. So we were going to her and looking for all the assistance we could get. So now, here she is again. I think what's really key in this is, and Dede said it, the timing is right, and it has been slumbering. Obviously, we're moving out of a recession, but the planning process that's going forward only involves two properties for upzoning. And the fact that these two properties, ours and one other, the MTD property, have been identified, as you may know, is the result of many years of discussions and contentiousness in terms of a number of issues in the eastern Galita Valley. So it appears very likely that our side and one other is going to move forward with a significant upzone, whether it's 20-units breaker or whether it's something that might be different than that, we don't know. But it's an opportunity that in some way, shape, or form, staff feels that your board should put to good use. And, and I would just indicate further, and I'm way beyond answering your question, I know, but if the board elected to go forward in a non-committal sort of way, the next step, I believe, would be to issue an RFP, which would be a competitive process to invite people to come in and make proposals, so that there would be some specific things for you to review in terms of what this would look like, what the structure would look like, how the district would be protected, what the revenues would look like. And with that in mind, you'd have a basis for perhaps comparing it to alternatives that, at the right time, we can talk about.
Ms. Edelson?
Can you speak to, was there issues or details that you were talking about when we met as a board that would be about a school entering into an agreement on a lease like this? Was there?
Yes. There are a couple of different ways that it could proceed. The traditional way is doing a purely competitive submit formal bids to be opened and reviewed by the board at the culmination of a very long process that involves having to notify a number of different agencies, having to do a number of different things that would be very time-consuming. That's the traditional, not low bid, in fact, it's high bid, lease process. You can do 99 years under that scenario. Alternatively, what may, what you may find attractive if you decide to move forward is to use another option that's referred to as joint occupancy. And under joint occupancy, if there is some aspect of the project that's going to be used by the district and incorporated into the project, most of the process that is otherwise required can be skipped. And that makes it potentially attractive to be thinking about the nursing option. Under the joint occupancy scenario, the district would be enabled, entitled to enter into a, a lease of up to 66 years. Ultimately, we would need to show that it was a good project, that the joint use that we were seeking to put it to made sense educationally, and it wasn't just a paste-on. And that requirement would be fulfilled by getting the approval of the State Board of Education.
And then that would be, say, putting some classrooms there scenario, such as that?
It would be incorporating part of a larger building or possibly a standalone building in the example that Mr. Pikert gave, that would accommodate the nursing students and staff from San Marcos and allow them to learn their skills and then go into the, for example, memory care unit where they would put to use those skills that they were learning. In my view, having looked at some of these kinds of joint occupancy scenarios, I think what Mr. Pikert is talking about here would more than adequately meet the requirements of the law.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pikert. I, I'll, I'll say that I, I was around for that first go-around right before the recession hit, as we were trying to look at what to do with two of our undeveloped properties. And now, I so appreciate, first of all, just looking at the Tatum property, and second of all, I've, as Ms. Limone referenced, this has, this has really been a difficult property for us to deal with. It is a large and beautiful site and unfortunately has a lot of safety issues on it because of vagrancy and violence that happens there. And I know that it's a worry to the neighborhood there, and so I hope that they would appreciate that we're looking at it again, so that we can, you know, think of ways just to mitigate that. In terms of, of this particular idea, I really like the idea of a senior housing project conceptually. Obviously, we'd need to know a lot more in terms of the development process, what it would look like, the money that's involved, timelines. I really, really like the idea of tying this in with the San Marcos Health Academy. I think that just is great for the community. I think you'll find that the entire board thinks that's a terrific idea. I'm definitely interested in moving forward with next steps, and I don't know if the rest of the board would nod for Dr. Cash here to, to see that, that, that we would like to move forward with next steps and, and find out more about what, what we could do and what this could look like. So I don't know what that means in terms of a timeline. Is that something that might come back to us in January, February?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Limone?
I want to add something, and I, I will also nod my head that I would like this to move forward. But I, and I, I don't know that we talked a lot about this, Mr. Price, but for me, regardless of the type of use that we go for, I do want this to be an open and competitive process. And I don't know if one use over the other, it sounded like if we went with the joint occupancy process that we would, I, I, I hope what I heard was that we would avoid time, but not necessarily the spirit of an open and competitive process. Is that what I heard or did hear?
It's an open, transparent, competitive process. The only limitation, I guess I would put on that, is that your board, because it would be entering into effectively a partnership with somebody, requiring a trusting relationship, instead of merely having to go along with somebody that offered the district the greatest amount of money, the proposals could be evaluated based on not only the revenue, but on the reputation and the solidity, et cetera, of who you chose to do business with. So it gives you more flexibility, but it doesn't take away at all from the openness, the availability of the public to come and comment and give input and to have a very transparent process.
Perfect. And that's, that makes me feel comfortable and confident. I think that this is a one-time shot, and I want to make sure that it's vetted, that it's thorough, and so I'm confident, I'm more confident hearing you clarify that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, and following up on what Mr. Price said about the public and comments and this being an open process, I, I know that the second district supervisor, Janet Wolf, has a lot of contact with this neighborhood and is certainly able to act as an intermediary in terms of communicating information, but I think at this point, before this comes back to the board again, I'd like to see that our district has direct contact with the neighborhood groups around the Tatum property so that they are pulled into this right from the start and are really participatory in the process. So I'd like to see that happen before we, we talk about this again. Okay?
By direct, can I ask a clarifying question?
Mm-hmm.
By direct contact, are you, do they have neighborhood association meetings?
Yes. They do. Well, they have neighborhood associations that you can get information about that, we can get that for you, but I know that you can as well.
Right. Yeah, I used to be a member of one of those neighborhood associations.
There you go. So, I mean, I don't, I don't mean that you need to present to them, but just that you're, that you're, that you've contacted their leadership so that they can disseminate information to their membership.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. And at this point, we will move on to item J, which is discussion items for consent. And we cleared that, so coming events, we already have that list of things that are coming up in the district. Future agenda items, board members. One future agenda item.
I will pass on my list.
There you go. One future agenda item related to the Tatum property that I think that we need to look at, and, and I'm not sure if it could come to us. You can think about this, because if you come up with an action plan, it could be in a board brief, but there are safety issues going on. We do need some sort of update on, on what the district, if there's some changes in plans, or else we need to discuss changes in plans. So I'd hope that that could be either on an agenda in January or, or in a board brief in January if, if the administrative staff have come up with some ideas. And with that, if there's no dissension, I will adjourn this meeting.